Okay, other business of the city council having been conducted, I'll call to order the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Mr. Smike?
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
So, first, I'd like to ask if there are any other additions to the agenda or if there are staff reports that should be heard in this section of the meeting. Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move to the presentation from the community coalition. And I believe that we've arranged for a 10-minute block for this. Is that your understanding? Ah, Diane is gesturing to me that, and this was her initiative, that 15 minutes. And I will, I will move that that is in order.
Good evening, council. I'm Joan Walls and I serve as the deputy city manager for the city of Champaign. And I thank you for allowing us to come and talk with you briefly about the community coalition and the work that's being done. I'm joined, to my left, Tracy Parsons, who is the director of the Access Initiative program, and to my right, superintendent of Urbana School District, Don Owen. And so I thank you for allowing us 15, it's probably about a 30-minute presentation. And so we are really going to move quickly, so bear with us. It's a wonderful opportunity to talk to you about the coalition. The coalition has actually launched in 2012. The city of Champaign experienced a terrible tragedy, and it was very important that community members from all over the Champaign-Urbana area come together to really talk about the difficult challenges of how we would move forward to improve police-community relations, as well as really look at some of the challenges that we're facing, our youth and our community. And so from there, over 300 citizens met, and we answered tough questions, but we were able to come up with a plan that really put the community coalition into focus. And so although the three of us sit before you this evening, I would be remiss not to introduce the colleagues who have been very involved over the past few years, really trying to help put the foundational structure in place for the coalition, and also inviting others to serve last year from Urbana, who have joined our forces and we continue to move it forward. And so when we go out and present, it's very important that I take the time to acknowledge some travel with us when they can, and so I'm just going to acknowledge them by name. Tim Bartlett, who was with the Urbana Park District, these individuals serve on the executive committee. And if you're in the audience, please stand to be acknowledged. Anthony Cobb, the chief of police for the city of Champaign. Dominic Cobb, who's with the University of Illinois. Patrick Connolly, who serves as the police chief for Urbana Police Department, and he also said he was timing me this evening. Dorothy David, our city manager for Champaign. Joe DeLuce, the Champaign Park District. Joseph Gallo, who was the deputy chief of the Champaign Police Department. Sue Gray, CEO of the United Way of Champaign County. Darlene Kleppel is with the Regional Planning Commission. Diane Marlin, Urbana City Council. Donald Owen, Urbana School District. Tracy Parsons, Access Initiative. Mina Pratt-Clark, the University of Illinois. Julie Pride, Champaign-Urbana Public Health District. Julia Reitz, who's our Champaign County State's Attorney. Orlando Thomas, Champaign School District. Peter Tracy, who's the CEO of the Champaign County Mental Health Board. Of course, Joan Walls, and also Judy Wiegand, who is our superintendent of Champaign Schools. Also, they're not on our executive committee, but they've been very involved as we've pulled together to move this forward, and that is Jeff Christensen, the University of Illinois Police Department, as well as Dan Walsh, who is the sheriff of Champaign County. And so, you know, we thank those individuals for being partners with us and trusting us with this presentation this evening. And as I mentioned, there's a lot of great work that's been done. And although we have an executive committee, we also have over 140 individuals from both Champaign and Urbana, and community organizations, and churches, and affiliates who serve as broader coalition partners. Over the past four years, we've been very busy working together, and I can't tell you that some of the challenges we encounter cross all of our jurisdictions, they're not unique to Champaign, they're not unique to Urbana or to the county, but what I will tell you that is unique to our community is our willingness to roll up our sleeves and work together to address some of the tough issues. And so as we've developed this partnership, I will not sit tonight and tell you that we always agree, but I will tell you that as we're working through the tough issues, we're willing to challenge one another and we're willing to come up with solutions in order for us to move forward. And that's why we're here this evening, to really talk about next steps, which is phase two of the coalition, which is the long-term sustainability of the program, not just yet, sorry. Really quickly, wanted to highlight a few of the initiatives that, you know, we're very proud of. Just briefly, I want to talk about the community walks. A part of what the coalition does is really engage our citizens. You know, it's not the representatives of the executive committee that come up with some of the priorities that we set, but we actually do go out and utilize community walks to knock on doors. And some of you may have participated in the one that we held recently in Urbana, that was the first one. And the next one coming up is actually Thursday at the University of Illinois, as we gear up for unofficial. And so those community walks are very important because we're able to gather feedback from our constituents to create programming, to enhance programming, and to set priorities moving forward. The other is police engagement and increased communication. And so what we mean by that is citizens told us that they really wanted our police departments to be more transparent, to engage community members and citizens. And so we're very proud that many communities across the nation don't have police chiefs and sheriffs who come to community meetings where citizens can ask questions, they can talk about some of the challenges that have come before them in their communities, many around gun violence. And so one of the things that we've really worked on and we really strive is, once a month, we have those meetings that are set. The other is the community violence over the past couple of summers, and even last week, I mean, community violence continues to affect the broader communities, both in Champaign and Urbana. And so we really want to work together to leverage our resources, to really troubleshoot, not just with the individuals who represent the organizations, but also with those citizens who perhaps live in the neighborhoods and really do want to have a voice. And the last I'll briefly discuss is a youth assessment center. A lot of us contribute to the youth assessment center. It's led by RPC, but many of our organizations, including your own, contribute dollars to that. Whew, I am moving really fast, and thank you for, because I don't want to take, how many minutes? Is that about four? Am I good? Okay. And so we continue to have needs, and that's why it's important. Our city council recognized that as a, as a community coalition, Champaign could not solve the problems alone. Many of the problems hit our school steps, and they hit our neighborhood steps. And so as we continue to move forward, you know, we really do want to look at ways to not reinvent the wheel, but to really start addressing some of these complex challenges, united, although different to each community, united to solving the problems. And so this evening, where we're at is we're going to the different boards and commissions to talk about what phase two of the coalition would look like. Our city council set a goal that we would come up with a long-term sustainability model, and as we've been going, we've been parallel with the Access Initiative program and the mental health board. And Tracy's going to talk a little bit about why we think that long-term model works best for our entire community.
All right, well, good evening. As Joan said, I'm Tracy Parsons. I'm the director of the Access Initiative, and I'll share a little bit more about that, but won't go into much detail as we, again, are condensing our information and our time. So over the past decade, well over the past decade, the mental health board and through the leadership of Peter Tracy, has really made a commitment to look at and address our disparities and the disproportionality of primarily African-Americans in our service delivery system. So education, child welfare, mental health, the juvenile justice system. The data is quite glaring and alarming, to be quite honest, and it really requires a focused and intentional approach to address some of these tough social and economic issues. As Joan mentioned, the Access Initiative, which I direct, we're in the final year. This was a federal project that our community was awarded, the grant. We've been working with those most difficult families over the past six years that have children involved with mental health issues in the juvenile justice system. So I'm not going to get into much, as much about the project, but that has been working simultaneously as we've been doing the work through the coalition. I personally actually facilitated the forum that Joan mentioned, when we had the community forum, and had the great community participation to come out and talk about some of the challenges we were facing at the time. So the mental health board has made a commitment to address cultural competency, look at how we are funding and what programs and services that we're funding in our community. We've been looking at how do we build family and youth voice and inclusion in our service delivery. We funded a evidence-based practice called PLL that works directly with families involved in the juvenile justice system. It's a family therapy model. And we've been working with the assessment center as well as, as we move forward, supporting something called Choices, which is a, we're a pilot community for a statewide initiative, again, looking at services for youth with mental health challenges and their families. And so Don's going to just jump in here to talk a little bit about Urbana School Board, Urbana School District coming on board, and then I'll come back and talk about phase, phase two real quick.
Thank you, and thank you again to the members of the Urbana City Council for the time tonight to talk about the coalition. About a year and a half ago during my first year superintendent, Chief Cobb and Chief Connolly approached me to talk about the work that the coalition had been doing specifically around the youth assessment center and around the Walk as One community walks, and asked if I needed support as a, as a new superintendent in the community. Obviously, I've been in the community a long time, and I had some very specific goals of my own about community engagement that fit in perfectly with the mission and vision of the coalition. One of the things that, that I had already set as a personal goal as superintendent was to do a community walk. And they said, you know, we have this model, we have people, and we can literally turn out 60, 70 people just with a few emails to help support your community walk. And so what we did as a school district is we looked at what messages we wanted to get out, who we wanted to get them out to, and what areas of Urbana we wanted to target with our first walk. And really, it was about attendance, it was about student discipline, student engagement, and the importance of summer programming to stay actively engaged with learning over the summer. We targeted an area that actually encompassed both the city of Urbana, but also parts of the county area in the Scottswood and East Urbana area. And what was amazing was, we had about 130 volunteers, we visited almost 700 homes, spoke to the families of 350 students of Urbana schools, talked about the issues of engagement and attendance, and our main message was, we, as a school district, are here for you. What was impressive to me, and what was impressed upon everyone from the school district that came out, was that it wasn't just school district employees. We had representatives from four different law enforcement agencies, we had representatives from the city council, we had representatives from public health, we had faith-based organizations. Everyone came out to support us and help us get our message out to these families. That engagement has paid off in all kinds of ways, in terms of families feeling more comfortable, coming in and talking to superintendents, principals, teachers about their kids, about what's going on for them as families. And we have been able to connect them with services through the coalition, through United Way, through 211, which is the, you know, referral line in the community, services referral line in the community. All of those things come together to benefit not just the schools, but also the families that, that we are here to support. The other thing that has benefited me as a, as a superintendent is the ability to network with all of these government agencies on a monthly basis, and sometimes more than monthly, to talk about issues and concerns that we're having in Urbana. Some of those concerns are directly related to schools, some of them are tangentially related to schools, because there are things that are happening in the community that our students are seeing, and then coming in and trying to deal with as, as students in our schools, and we need to support them. We need to have an ability to talk to them, but sometimes we don't even know what those things are. And having an ability to network with, with social servants agencies, government agencies, law enforcement agencies from across both communities is critical for us to help understand what our families are going through and to help them problem-solve, to, to work through issues and support them in their, in their students' learning. We're, again, excited to be at the table. We've already seen benefits just in terms of interacting with, with members directly involved in the youth assessment center. We've also been making connections with Champaign schools to expand areas of their summer youth employment program, and looking at ways of doing pilots of that here in Urbana. Council member Marlin has been very active at engaging us in those discussions and helping push us forward, and, and the coalition has been very supportive at helping find some, some funds to try and get that off the ground. And so we're excited to start meeting soon to plan out how we could pilot some things this summer with members of the coalition. And I'll stop there. I know we're short on time, but again, I appreciate the time.
Okay, so real briefly, as we move into phase two of the coalition, you know, we are organized and do have a formal working structure. And we'll get you all a copy of the presentation. We apologize for not bringing that for you today, but it's on the screen. And so we have a vision statement, mission statement, we have language that talks about what system of care is, so that people understand that this is really a best-practice model that looks at how organizations work and link better together to collaborate, to serve families better. We do have an organizational structure. We look to focus our work in three different areas, so healthy youth and families, community justice, and then education and youth development. As I shared with you, one of the benefits of being part of the federal project and then as well, since we started this work through the coalition, we've become part of something called the Unity Network, which is made up of about 25 cities across the country that are looking at these collaborative models for reducing violence, violence prevention, actions and activities, and really looking at how do you build collaboration and get all of us that do this work working together. We all know that we work too often in our silos and, you know, defend our turf and our territory and all those types of things. And so what we're really wanting to do through the coalition is break through all of those things. I just received today from the Unity Group, an updated document that talks about multi-sector approach to preventing violence, and so it's a blueprint. So we're looking at these best-practice models from across the country. All of them talk about collaboration, all of them talk about investment as a very important part, so that's why we are here talking with you today. We want the city of Urbana to invest in the coalition and invest in this process. So how we work, we meet monthly, as we've talked about. We've got an executive committee, we have monthly meetings that are attended by anywhere from 25 to 40 different folks from all across our community coming together to talk about these really tough social and economic issues. I will tell you, in my 20-plus years of doing community work in the community, I don't think we've had, I know this is the best leadership we have from our police departments across the board with our police chiefs. They are at the table. I think we saw in the Ferguson community, when that all blew up last fall, police didn't have a relationship with the community. We've been meeting, we've been talking. I think if we were to have another unfortunate incident, I think we would be able to come together as a community to talk about solutions and then how we work together to solve these tough, challenging things. And so we are here to talk, we've been, so we've done city of Champaign, city council. Last week, we were at the multi-jurisdictional, no, multi-mic.
Intergovernmental.
Intergovernmental council. I think in two weeks, we go to United Ways Board, we are scheduled in early March for the Champaign Park District Board. We had a great joint meeting with the Urbana School District and the Park District, got into a fascinating conversation around race, that just there aren't places where these conversations are taking place in our community. And inclusion, and how we get folks involved in what we're doing, and how we have some successes. So we're really excited about the work that we're doing with the coalition. Again, we are here, we are asking each one of the partners for a contribution of $5,000, so that is part of our reason that we are here. And so I think we'll stop there. I know Joan wants to share a little bit about the city of Champaign's investment in the coalition and in the work, because they've, they've really carried the water for us, and it's time for the rest of the community to, to participate and be involved.
Just briefly, as Tracy mentioned, the city definitely is committed, and we see the benefits. We had the opportunity to go to Minneapolis a couple of years ago, seems like it was just last week, but we were invited, as a community, to actually talk about the great work we're doing. Our community's too small, so we can't be a member of the Unity Network because it's for populations of 250,000 or more, but the fact that we're collaborating in our community, we were invited out to be able to participate. And again, you know, that speaks volumes to the work that we're willing to do. Since the beginning of the coalition's launch, the city has committed, so the past three years over, about $28,000 plus in-kind staff support to, to keep the coalition moving. Our council also has budgeted one-time monies for about $65,000 to assist with the transition to phase two of the coalition, and then we continue to contribute approximately $15,000 to the youth assessment center. And so as we move to phase two, which is what we're out talking about now, the mental health board has really stepped up to say that we're, we're willing to own this, as Tracy mentioned. And a part of us going through the process, a part of what the executive committee members said, is that those who sit at the executive committee table would then commit a small financial contribution, which keeps us keeping the work moving forward. And so with that, we'll, we'll close, because we could go on forever, as you can see.
Okay, questions, or, yes, Mr. Smike? Yeah, Tracy, what happens to the, you know, the federal money runs out in a year, what's going to happen with that program, or is that going to be absorbed into this as part of the overall?
Yeah, thanks, Charlie. So yes, we are in year six of the six-year project. There are certain parts of the work we've already transitioned. So I mentioned the Choices pilot project that's in our community, that's a Medicaid, DCFS-based program, but the rec services we were doing to families, we've already transitioned to that project. We've established a family and youth-run organization that's, a big part of our work has been the importance of family voice, family participation, family choice. And so we've set up an organization that the mental health board will be funding, that will be moving the youth and family work forward. Shandra Somerville, who does cultural competency, and myself will become mental health board staff members. So we've got a whole transition plan for the initiative. But really, the biggest part of what Access is about is building the infrastructure and collaboration for organizations to work better, to serve families better. That's exactly what the coalition is built on, and so this was a perfect merger, perfect, you know, connecting of the two projects and entities.
And the second question, trivial one, when do you need this money by?
I think we're looking at July 1 as when we were looking at the start for the next fiscal year, yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Are there other questions? Mr. Ammons, could I ask you to take the chair and recognize me to ask a question?
Absolutely, Mr. Jacobson. Yes, you have a question or a comment, Mr. Jacobson?
Have you ever gone through the exercise, a lot of your, the people with whom you deal and you're serving, come in contact with the criminal justice system? Now, there are a couple of different ways for people to get help, a couple of avenues for people to get help for mental health or substance abuse. Some people with mental health issues wind up on the fifth floor of presence. People with substance abuse will wind up in Prairie Center, but sometimes, instead of that avenue, they come in through the, through criminal justice system and may wind up in jail. So my question is, and probably that's a large fraction of the people that you're dealing with. So my question is, have you ever done an assessment of the resources that would be necessary so that everybody who has mental health, substance abuse problems, who encounters criminal justice system, gets the same level of treatment that they would get if they went to, if they wound up actually in the hospital or in Prairie Center? So, so here's, here's what I'm groping. Here, I'll tell you the context of this. Later in the evening, we're going to be talking about our view of the jail expansion. And I've proposed a resolution, I don't know how the council's going to dispose of it, but I'll tell you my motivation. My motivation is, and my concern is, that while dollars are being proposed for construction, dollars have not been proposed for the need evaluated for programs to support mental health and substance abuse treatment for people who come into the criminal justice system. And you might be in a very, very good position to assess, I mean, you've come to us and you've asked for something that's kind of like, it's not exactly what you need, but what you think we could afford, or, you know, it's a match of that. But have you done an assessment of what the community really needs? What are the resources the community must put into this to, to meet those needs?
So part of our Access work, and we have a thorough evaluation, that we're, we're going to be very excited to release that information as we continue going through our final year. So what we've done is look at costs associated for services for young people that we are serving. So we are, I've not done the full extensive to know what that would cost, from your question, but I think we'll be able to get to that point by looking at the successes that we've been able to identify in services and to support the young folks that we've been working with. Now, it's, it's a more complicated issue than just looking at it that way, and so many of the young folks, we've talked about through Access as doing our work through a trauma and justice-informed lens. So many of the kids that we're working with are having trouble at home, they're having trouble at school, or they're having trouble in the community, and what we've tried to do is catch, catch them. And so sometimes it's, you know, it can be the family structure, it can be trauma that the kid has, has dealt with or is dealing with. There could be a number of different factors to contribute why a kid is making some wrong decisions. And so we've been looking at that work for, in a comprehensive way. Our focus is youth. Now, you're going to be talking about the jail, that's adults later, but there is a correlation, and then probably some of the ones we're working with are going to be the ones that are going to be channeled into the jail that you're going to be talking about. And so we have the assessment center, for example. A big part of that is catching the kids early. So these are the kids that are truants, or the kids that are doing petty crimes, or done things that, we don't want them to get caught in the juvenile justice system. We want to be able to capture them. You know, we're, we're working to strengthen the assessments that we're doing for the young people once they go to the assessment center, so that hopefully we channel them, get them the supports that they need, but channel them in other direction than the corrective discipline approach. So that probably doesn't answer all of what you were asking, but...
Okay, I, I would urge you to make some kind of judgment as to what you need to do, what need... I would urge you to make some kind of judgment as to what you need to do, what needs to be done in your area of concern, and challenge the community to come up with the resources.
If I could just, I think that that's exactly one of the strengths of the Coalition. And I appreciate you bringing that up because, in my mind, that's exactly what happened with the Youth Assessment Center, was we were seeing, and when I say "we," I mean the entire community, both school districts, both police forces, were seeing a higher rate of engagement and kind of funneling into the juvenile justice system of youth that maybe didn't need to be there and maybe needed additional supports. And the Youth Assessment Center was a great way to divert young people who had made a choice that got them in some kind of trouble away from the juvenile justice system and away from, you know, the system that is not where we want any of them to be, and into resources and connected to services in the community to allow them to stay out of the system and to kind of give them, give them the support they need to stay in school, to stay at home, in their homes, with their families, and then give the families and the youth the support to build a better, you know, a better life for themselves. I think that's exactly the strength I see in the Coalition. And I agree. I take your comments and questions as a challenge for Phase Two of the Coalition. That is exactly what we plan to work on.
Okay. Well, you know, we may have sticker shock, but give us the bad news.
Right, right.
Because we've got, you know, $32 million worth of bad news on the jail expansion. We need some bad news here, too.
Understood. But I guess, here's my second point to your question, and I thank you for talking about sticker shock. The thing that impressed me so much was the Youth Assessment Center came out of basically nowhere. And you had the Mental Health Board, you had the State's Attorney's Office, you had both city police forces and the county joined together, and then you had Champagne School District that had a building that was being underutilized. And they said, "You know what? Let's create something." And they did it on basically a shoestring.
Right.
And that's where I think the sticker shock is really cool, is, yeah, it costs a lot of money to incarcerate someone. It doesn't cost a lot of money to connect someone to resources that help them.
Okay. So, also tell us how we can save some money at that other end. That'd be great. Yeah. Yes, I'll take the chair back and now recognize folks.
Well, I have to give it to you first.
Oh, you have to give it to me. Please, please, Mr. Ammons, can I have the chair back?
Please, I'd like to give the chair back to you, Mr. Councilman Jacobson, and then I have some comments or questions after, I guess, Diane.
Okay. Ms. Marilla.
Now that you've finished fighting over the chair, I would just like to say I'm very supportive of the Community Coalition. I had been concerned about gun violence in my ward, but also in Champagne, Urbana. I was also very interested in a summer youth employment program, trying to get something like that started in Urbana because I liked what I was seeing in Champagne. And Chief Connolly told me about the existence of the Community Coalition and invited me to come to one of the meetings. So, I've been attending them since, for about a year or more. And I will second everything that has been said here. It's a wonderful gathering of community resources in one room every month. And one of the most valuable things about the Coalition is that they've established a framework for communication and collaboration between the police and between the community. And the channels are open now. And this is a time when we do have some challenges, but if the channels of communication are open and used on a regular basis, when we are faced with, God forbid, any kind of a major incident in Champagne, Urbana, again, they will be open. And I think it will allow the community to deal with whatever comes our way much easier. The other thing is, my very first meeting there, I made a connection with Orlando Thomas. I keep wanting to say Orlando Bloom, but it's Orlando Thomas. And he in turn gave me the name of the woman who coordinates the summer job programs in Champagne. And I sat down and had two-hour meeting with her over coffee and took a lot of notes and sent them on to the school district. And it was the beginning, I think, of some really good progress toward getting a pilot job program. So, this kind of bringing together resources and people in one place on an ongoing basis, I think is just invaluable because whatever we're facing in Urbana, it's a Champagne, Urbana, Rantoul, Champagne County, et cetera issue. So, I'm happy to support this work and be part of it.
Okay. Mr. Ammons.
So, first of all, I'm definitely supportive of the initiative. I have not been directly involved, but I've been watching from afar. And there's a couple of questions that I have, but I want to just give some context to my questions. I know we're just asking questions, not making comments, Charlie. So, given that I've heard a lot about African-American youth, cultural competency, and just basically the mental health of our young people, the question that I have is how are we implementing, or how you all implementing, the Coalition implementing, the concerns around the, we have a task force here in Urbana around the I-DOT traffic study, the racial profiling, basically is how it's termed in many arenas, but how you all implementing that in the Coalition to address those particular concerns? Because we do have, I think that's an outstanding issue. Also, tying that together, given the incident that took place at Centennial, and you brought up Ferguson, how does the Coalition reach out to the youth involved in the Black Lives Matter movement? So, if you all could just speak to those. Joan, actually, those are my questions for Joan. That was the Joan bracket, right there. Well, whoever, it doesn't matter who answers the question.
Well, Tracy might just go a little faster than me, but, so, you know, when you have to actually take a presentation from, that's about 30 minutes to about 10 or 15 minutes, you know, we lose a lot of the meat of this presentation. And so, what I will tell you, and I've been very consistent, I think the panel's been very consistent, as we look at some of the challenges that are really affecting our youth of color. I mean, I have a slide, the data, that speaks to the youth that are involved in the juvenile justice system. Fifty-eight percent of the youth that are referred are African-American. And we look at the court filings, 67% were African-Americans. And we talk about behavior and some of the attendance and some of the truance. I mean, we've got, we've got the data that's really driving the work that we do. And so, you know, as a community, we can no longer sit back quietly and not pretend that the data doesn't exist, where we need to come together, roll up our sleeves, and really begin to look at how we do things differently. And so, all of those movements across the nation are happening. And a lot of our colleagues across the nation are having to address some of the same issues. But what I'll say, Mr. Ammons, is the fact that we are willing and we're able and we're sitting here and we're connected every single month to do it. It's not always easy, and we don't always agree, but we are pushing forward. And when we talk about Mr. Jacobson's question around how we're assessing these initiatives, you know, I've been in this community for a long time, and some of the work that we're doing, we continue to do it the same way. And sometimes, the benefits aren't very positive. And so, as a Coalition now, we take a step back and we begin to say, "You know what? We've been doing this for about 20 years, and we're still talking about..." So, when do we pause for a moment and really, sincerely be committed to doing it differently? And I believe I get energy, you know, as, I mean, you know, I have to keep it tight, but I get energy around that because some people are very uncomfortable. And when I presented to my council a few weeks ago, I said, "This may be uncomfortable for some when we talk about our children of color and our families of color who are experiencing some of the negative impacts disproportionately." We've got to talk about that. And the Coalition allows that discussion to take place, and it doesn't take place in many other settings. And so, that's the energy we put toward doing it differently and really addressing some of the root challenges that are faced, whether fair, unfair, real or perceived, not so real, the data shows. And that's what's driving our work.
And if I could just add one thing, you talked about engaging youth in the Black Lives Matter movement. And one of the things that I connected personally with was an African-American minister in Urbana who said, "I really," he was very frustrated over the summer with some of the gun violence. And he said, "I want to do something." And he contacted me and he contacted several other members of the community, he contacted other ministers, and he started a group that is, you know, "Take Back Our Community," basically is what he's saying, "Take a Stand." And as I've worked with him, we connected him to the Coalition to broaden the base of this conversation. And our last event was actually at a church over in Champagne that had youth voice, and only youth voice, talking about what gun violence means to them, what violence on a broader scale means to them, what bullying means to them, how that's impacting them as youth of color. And that was one of the most powerful events I went to because, and as you know, you attended the Martin Luther King Celebration here at the Civic Center. One of my passions is to stop talking and listen to the youth because that's really how we're going to improve our schools, our community, and our cultural competencies as adults. I mean, that's another cultural competency that we all have to work on regardless of our race or income or gender. We have cultural competencies around issues of youth that we need to be quiet and listen. So, I appreciate that question.
And so, finally, I think the only thing I would add is that, I think, it's the reason I talked about the excitement about moving forward. So, I think all the things that you're talking about, so, we already have on our agenda to have and go out to neighborhood groups. So, we know that Urbana has a number of neighborhood groups. City of Champagne has a Neighborhood Services Department. Our plan is to go out and participate and meet with those groups. As I shared with you, we've established a youth and family-run organization that meets monthly, that will be a feeder for information and participation in our Coalition work. So, I think we're positioned well to move forward, and I think we can be helpful as, you know, I heard the conversation a couple of weeks ago about community involvement and community input. I think the Coalition is willing and will be sponsoring neighborhood events where we could certainly have, again, I mentioned the involvement and support we have from the police chiefs. I know that they would participate in the, they participate in everything else. So, I know they would participate in the neighborhood meetings. We could use one of those to focus on police-community relations specifically, and we'd be pleased to initiate that. So, I think that's the great part. We're not creating another organization. We're bringing the organizations that are existing in our community and the resources and the programs together so that we have full participation and inclusion in the community. So, we aren't creating, you know, we don't do programs ourselves. We aren't an organization from that place. The Coalition is existing bodies that's in our community.
What is the age group usually of the young people that you all serve, basically? Is it from what to what?
Well, through Access, it's been 10 through 18. But that's just, again, one of the projects, so...
My other question was about, it was the last two questions. One was, where are we with the summer youth employment? Where are we actually at with that? And Tracy, just a more, a little bit more clarity around the continuing cultural competence, you're right. You know, I know we hear a lot about it from the standpoint of, is it just our members in the white community needing to understand African-American perspective? Or is it broader than that? What, if you would elaborate on that just for a second? So, those are my last two.
So, sure. So, the summer youth employment program, just real recently, within the last week and a half or so, we found out through the Mental Health Board, through the Community Coalition, that they're willing to put some seed money in that would probably get us maybe between 10 and 15 students involved this summer. Champagne School District has done a great job of laying out some groundwork, and, you know, they've been going for two and a half years now. We're taking the lessons that they've learned and we're applying them to how we can make it run in Urbana. And so, that's where we're at. We're going to start our initial stages of planning within the next week, hopefully have some reports to our school board, which, actually, they're listening, they're hearing it now for the first time because of your question. But hopefully, have some reports back to our school board by the end of March about where we're at and what our plans are. So, thank you.
There's a place called Hickory River that might be interested in donating a job or two or something like that.
Okay. Are there further questions? Yes, Mr. Brown.
The cultural competency, that was it. That was it.
Well, you know, I don't want to get on my soapbox, but, you know, I'm really, I believe this issue of investing in our young folks and jobs is something that, as a community, we are extremely poor at. And so, while the City of Champagne and Champagne Schools have come together and 150 young people are working in the summer, it's really disappointing that our private sector is not stepping up, providing summer jobs for our kids. We shouldn't be paying, I wouldn't want to pay to have a kid work at Hickory River. Hickory River should sponsor a kid and pay for that, but that's Tracy's soapbox. So, cultural competency is something that, you know, we've made a commitment to through the Mental Health Board. And that's how you deliver service, how you welcome people into your organizations, how you become a culturally aware organization. So, we've been doing trainings through the entire time, through the Access Initiative, around cultural competency, what that looks like. And we'll continue to do that. So, again, the Mental Health Board has made a commitment to continue pushing and promoting and educating and informing around cultural competency, what that is, what that looks like. And it's really across the board. So, it's how you serve people, what your organization looks like, how welcoming is it, you know, understanding the diverse, I mean, it can be, you know, from a human relations place, all the protected classes that we look at. How culturally aware are we as a community, as organization, as individuals? And so, we're going to be committed to doing that work. Whether we have a Coalition or not, the Mental Health Board has made a commitment to push that.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I've heard a lot of good things about Youth Assessment Center, and I guess the county's now considering Adult Assessment Center kind of modeled after that. So, I'm looking forward to see what comes out of that. I guess the main question I have is, how do you go about measuring performance on something like this? And this must be something that's really hard to do because you have what number of people trained, maybe some numbers on families helped, but a lot of it is just kind of Coalition building and discussing and sharing knowledge and stuff. Over the six years, have you discovered any good ways to how you'd go about measuring performance and how we could use it going forward to see what kind of impact we're having and whether we're improving or not?
Yeah. I think, you know, as we move forward again, so, this document I shared with you, that's exactly what it's about. And so, it shows the way that you structurally organize yourself, what are the measurements that you're going to be putting in place that you then can report back out to the funding sources? Because we know, I mean, Diane has shared with us from day one that this is going to be an important issue for not only the City of Urbana, but really all of our partners, all of our organizations that now we're asking for resources for. We're going to have to demonstrate our effectiveness. You know, when you talk about youth violence and you talk about the high rate of violence we've had the last couple of summers and last couple of years, you know, if we have a reduction in that, you know, how do you, what's the effectiveness? What's the, how do you measure that? But obviously, we want this violence eradicated from our community. And so, again, you know, we look at the programs and services. So, in Urbana, for example, they have the Splash Program. That's a, you know, great program with the schools and the park districts. So, in my meetings with the park district folks, they've been saying, "How do we get those kids that we know need to be part of this program, to be included in this program and diversify the base? How do we get folks taking advantage of our programs that we already have in place?" And so, what the Coalition is able to do is help support the initiatives, the work of the individual partners and bringing that together so that they aren't trying to solve a summer job program or those kinds of issues in isolation. Schools can say, "Here are kids here that need to be part of Splash." The parks can say, "Okay, here's an opportunity that we have." The city can say, "We are interested in..." And so, we're able to bring, you know, those, we're only bound by our ability to be flexible and learn and address those issues. And so, but we will have some measures that we know we'll have to share our successes.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, is there a missing one? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Madigan.
I just want to say, first of all, thanks for the free plug to the 16 people who are Well, but I will say, as the owner of a local business, I employ teen youth year-round. Doesn't matter what color they are, as long as they're willing to come through the door, be well-dressed, well-behaved. be well-dressed, well-behaved, polite to customers, and have a good work ethic, I'm all about it. It's a great first job for a kid. It's a great first job. I can't necessarily donate quote-unquote "jobs." You know, it's more about, I think what we need to be focused on here is how do we, how do we prepare a teen to come through a business's door? And I'm more than willing to help them, give them interview points and those type of things and say, here's what I'm looking for as a business owner. More than willing to do that. And I, every small business in town is willing to do that, who employs youth.
I think that should be goal number one of summer job programs, is to help prepare young folks for the world of work. So that's where the partnership comes in, to give those work ethics, those do's and don'ts of the workplace. For many of them, this would be their first jobs. I think what I was addressing is the jobs themselves. So while they're not donated jobs, they are actual jobs in businesses. It's an investment back into our youth, our community. And so you're doing a fantastic job. Thank you. You were put on the spot, and I didn't realize, but at the same time, I do think our business community needs to step up more. I do think that that's a place that we are strongly lacking.
Maybe the thing to do is to figure out how the coalition can work with small businesses to help maybe give, develop a program where we can, where we can help kids while they're in the school, or even at the Youth Assessment Center or wherever, hey, here are a few tips we can give you on how you can approach a business. Maybe we can network some businesses and get some of that kind of thing done. I'm always looking for good folks to employ, always. It's the major challenge of my business. So I'm sure there's room to work together.
Absolutely.
More questions? I don't want to cut anybody else off or ignore anybody. Okay. Well, thank you very, very much. As you can see, we are interested in what you're doing.
Thank you.
So Brandon, will you introduce the presentation? Is that your role? Okay.
I'm Natalie Kenny Marquez. I'm the Marketing Coordinator here at the City of Urbana and the Director of Urbana's Market at the Square. Thanks for giving me a few minutes this evening to talk to you about the 2014 market season. I couldn't think of a better topic to talk about during these temperatures than a farmer's market. Hopefully it gives us some hope that spring is on its way. We had another great market season in 2014, and we hopefully showcase that too in our new annual report layout. Brought some color and photos into that for you.
I'd like to point out that this report made me very hungry.
Excellent.
That's the idea, right?
That is the idea. Oh, I think we're kind of stuck here. It doesn't seem to like the presentation. Hold on just a moment, please.
If you don't go full screen?
Yeah. We're not gonna go full screen, so, sorry about that. So in 2014, we saw 285 registered and approved participants, which is steady with our 2013 numbers. We break participants down into categories. Prepared foods, so that's like bakers, candy makers, ice cream vendors, and other prepared food items. We have growers, those are our producers, the one that grow the fruits and vegetables you see at the market. We have performers and buskers. Those are the folks that come check in with market staff and play in various places throughout the market. We have community groups, those are nonprofits, our charitable organizations, and educational and government organizations, and arts and crafts vendors, pottery, soaps, jewelry, furniture. And the arts and crafts vendors continue to be our highest category of participants at the market. We also saw a few new vendors this year at the market, thanks to the new temporary liquor license that allows for the package sales of locally-produced beer, wine, and spirits. We saw two vineyards last year, and I've already received inquiries from other vineyards across Illinois to participate in the 2015 season. Each week, staff, we go out and we count attendance. That's to help us estimate the attendance each week at the market. In 2014, we saw 123,733 visitors attending the market. So if you break that up over the 27 weeks, that's an average of about 4,500 people. So it's still going strong after 35 years of being in business here in Urbana, and our busiest months are always June and July. And those numbers are pretty steady with 2013 as well. The market offers two free programs each month. One is Sprouts at the Market. It's now in its seventh season, and it's our nutrition and farm linkage program for kids aged three to eight years old. It runs from May through October. Last year, we saw over 400 children participate during the 2014 season. We have different topics each month, and we update them annually. We also have arts programming. That's the Arts Workshops and Performance Series. It's part of the city's Public Arts Program. Last year, it attracted over 1,000 participants throughout the season. It's free, it's all ages, and it's been a very successful addition to the market over the past six years. It's a great opportunity to support local artists and showcase the wide range of music styles available in those performances. The market is known for its creative marketing campaigns and active social media presence, which includes Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Instagram is new this past year for the market. We also saw a 52% increase in our Market Mail subscribers. We started Market Mail back in 2013, and that's our weekly e-newsletter that we send to subscribers, and we highlight what to expect that Saturday at the market. It also provides information about our programming, which I just shared with you, and other events at the market like our Farmer's Market Blood Drive and our Farm-to-Food Bank program with the Eastern Illinois Food Bank. Just as a side note, farmers that participated in that program donated over 13,000 pounds of fresh produce to the Eastern Illinois Food Bank last year, so that's pretty impressive. The market continued to work with UPTV to write, record, and produce weekly video updates. The video update this year was kicked up a notch. We had a local musician, music group actually, record a little jingle for the market. It's pretty catchy, so I put a link to the market menu in the report, and I check it out. Again, it's pretty catchy, so. We also worked closely with local media, including TV and radio, to spread the word about the market. And this included regular appearances on WCIA's afternoon program, CI Living, as well as remote broadcast with the radio station mix 94.5. And if you're up early enough in the morning, you might have seen us on Ag Answers. That usually airs at about 5:20 in the morning, which I know you're all up at 5:20 in the I wanted to share with you a couple of the financial highlights from this past year. The market, the operating expenditure has totaled just over $62,000. Staff was able to reduce some of the expenses this season, thanks to an opportunity with the State of Illinois to rent a low-cost wireless EBT machine. And the EBT machine allows us to accept SNAP benefits at the farmer's market, which we've been doing since 2010. Our largest expenses continue to be staffing and promotions, and we expect expenses this next season to remain steady. Our revenue totaled just over $78,000 in 2014. If you compare the cornstalk to the tomato plant, you'll see this is a slight increase over previous seasons. Our revenues come from vendor fees, from farm inspections, and the use of electricity out at the market, as well as merchandise sales, and those are our promotional t-shirts and tote bags. We also expect that revenues will remain steady this next season. So already looking ahead to this next season, it might be freezing cold outside, but we've already received over 50 applications for the 2015 season. Our applications went live on February 1st, and we expect them to continue to roll in. We continue to work with the Urbana Business Association to promote year-round farmer's market shopping in Urbana. It's pretty uncommon in Illinois to have a community that has year-round farmer's market shopping opportunities, and so that's a great asset to our community. We're also dedicated to achieving the goal to promote the market as an educational forum for our consumers and to learn the uses and benefits of quality, locally-grown food and prepared foods. And so one of the ways that we're gonna do that this season is with the creation of a new program called Farm Fresh and Fast. We're gonna post a weekly recipe card that includes seasonal ingredients found at the market. They're gonna be fast, fresh, easy to prepare, and will also include an estimated cost per serving on these recipe cards. And to expand on this initiative, we'll be demonstrating the recipes live on TV each week, thanks to a new partnership with WCIA's afternoon program, CI Living. They've actually invited us to cook the recipes each week, starting April 30th, and that will run for 28 consecutive weeks, so be sure to tune in. That's gonna be a great opportunity for us. We hope not to burn down the kitchen on live TV. So that's a little bit about the market this past season. So with that, I want to wrap things up, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. But first, I want to thank you again for your time this evening, and thank you for your support, council, and all the different departments and divisions that work with the market on a day-to-day basis. We're grateful for your support and your support of the market's mission and efforts.
Counsel, yes, Mr. Roberts.
So the market's been a huge success, and it's grown pretty much every year. And, you know, we're very proud of it, really. It's one of the most wonderful go-to moments in the weekends here in Urbana during the summertime. There's been a lot of, the preponderance of market space is given to arts and crafts vendors and buskers, it looks like, so we have a real strong arts presence. And also, I know that community groups are really popular for having booth space. So is it likely that the market's gonna need to expand in some way? I mean, are you, for the success and the continued growth of the market, it looks like it will be required to expand in the future. And at the given location, are, is the market board talking about how best to accommodate that? Or do you feel that there's enough space currently for meeting all the needs?
That's an excellent question. So the numbers in here are approved vendors and approved community groups and things like that, but that doesn't mean they come every Saturday. You know, the months of May, September, October, the first weekend of November, we have open spaces at the market. It's June, July, and August where we're packed in there, and that's because it's harvest season, and so our growers usually request an extra space because they have a flatbed of corn or something like that. I don't want to expand and then have even more open spaces in those other parts of the season, so it's a very delicate matter. It's something that, you know, I've talked about with vendors and with community groups. And at this point, I think we'll remain in the physical boundaries where we're at, at the market, and see how it goes another season. But since not every participant comes every weekend, that does make somewhat of a difference.
Other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
We, I think we love the market.
We kick off on May 2nd, so put that in your calendars.
Next up is another presentation, a review of the 2014 Carbanas Pilot Program.
And presenting tonight is Myles Thomas, our Economic Development Associate.
All right. Hopefully, this presentation doesn't close on its own. All right. So the Carbana Pilot Program ran last summer with closing up the program kind of into early November. We started a little later than we would have liked to, just to kind of, as we were getting prepared for setting it up for the first time, so there were a couple of little setbacks pushing it further into the summer season. So we'd like to see the efficiency of that process move up a bit. So the pilot program was a result of staff being tasked with the goal of developing and engaging public space. And it was an alternative to permanent extension of the sidewalks or other proposed measures that would have been cost prohibitive at the time. We received inquiries from business owners about how we could make efficient use of space and extend their outdoor seating. And staff found parklets, or Carbanas, as we like to call them, to be the most efficient use of space for this purpose. Parklets have been used around the country, Grand Rapids, Michigan, San Francisco, California, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and have been successful in their programs extended over and over. We found Carbanas to be the least intrusive option for extending the sidewalk seating, and they provided space that could be shared by businesses without interrupting vehicular or pedestrian traffic. And we've wanted to frame this by assessing our objectives. So the survey that I'm presenting to you now takes a lot of the items in this slide and tries to assess how successful we were in creating, in using this option to create space that was an efficient use of our downtown and efficient for the business users that use them throughout the summer season. So we were framing this by inhibiting, creating something that would not inhibit pedestrian traffic, lower cost, and essentially that it would provide a great alternative for outdoor seating. Our survey solicited responses from all over Urbana. We opened the survey on January 5th and ran it for about three weeks. The first day that the survey was open, we promoted on social media, public releases, and we had about 50% of our responses the first day. 114 total responses. We saw people from Urbana, Champaign, Mohammed, Savoy, St. Joseph, Philo, and Fairmont. The respondents, we asked respondents to tell us whether they were residents of Urbana-Champaign, residents of downtown, employees, downtown business owners, visitors, tourists. So, and this question was posed that people could answer in multiple ways. So some indicated that they were residents, but they were also downtown residents, or they were residents, but they were also downtown business owners. And we found out of the people that responded that about 85% had either used a Carbana or had some activity that brought them into contact with a Carbana. We wanted to ascertain the level of interaction with Carbanas. So we found that everybody that responded either visited Urbana a few times a month or more. Many of those that visited Urbana visited downtown several times a week, driving, walking, and biking downtown. We had over 50% of our respondents that walked or biked on a regular basis, and many that also utilized Carbanas to sit outside, to eat, drink, and converse with their neighbors. These questions were framed to solicit responses that would measure the, measure our objectives. So we wanted to know whether people really utilized them, whether they had good experiences, whether they spent more time in downtown Urbana, or just generally whether they felt that they were kept in clean order and were a successful implementation. All of these questions about the Carbana solicited about a 90%. All of these questions about the, about the curbana solicited about a 90% positive response. The only one that was less than that was spending more time in downtown Urbana because of curbanas. It was still a fairly positive response, more than 75% indicated that they somewhat agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. But we also saw a lot of people commenting in the open commentary section that indicated that they, they came to Urbana because they wanted to try it out, or they saw it in the news gazette, and they wanted to sit in their curbana and see what it was like. We asked some more questions to kind of assess whether curbanas were inhibiting in any way. For the most part, people felt that they did not impede vehicular bicycle or pedestrian traffic. All fairly positive responses as far as their, their balance with the streetscape. Fewer people indicated that they wanted to see different uses, but many people commented in the open section that they wanted to see arts, music being displayed, people performing, or they made other suggestions that indicated that this was important to them. So even though that was kind of a less positive response, many indicated the reasons why they, they felt that that would be a good utilization of curbanas in the future. We had almost an 88%, almost 88% out of our respondents state that they wanted to see the curbana's program continued, and that they'd like to see more curbanas in downtown. So these comments are from the open commentary section. We had about 101 comments out of the 114 respondents, and we organized these into topic. So in balancing those with the, the questions that were posed, many people indicated that they were a great way to sit outside and enjoy the warm weather, or they patronized the business locations that utilized them. There were 19 comments that were very, very impactful. They wanted the program continued, and they wanted to see them get set up earlier, which is our intention this year. And we had two respondents that loved the name curbana, which was their only comment in the whole survey. We did receive a few comments that were critical of curbana, curbanas, which were to be expected. Some people felt that they were, they were uncomfortable with the proximity to traffic because they were between the curb and the bike lane. They did, they did feel that that proximity was a little bit too close. Some people indicated that they felt like they, they had bicycles speeding by them, or they indicated that the railing design brought about that feeling because there were, there was just a very little bit of barrier between them and the road. But we also had people that felt that the railing design was great, and that was the balance that we were trying to strike when we proposed the, the budget for this program. As you know, we, we had initially proposed building the railings in-house to save on the construction. The difference was about, it was about $25,000 to construct with the system and install the railings, have the railings designed and installed by Public Works versus about $45,000 if we use the rail system designed by the company that we bought the leveling system from. We had five comments that stated that curbanas were either a waste of resources and/or called to discontinue the program, but again, that's five out of 114 respondents. We also had some people indicate that they impeded valuable parking spaces, or they chose not to visit a business because they couldn't access the most accessible space, and one that did not like the name curbana. Our business, we surveyed our business users, all indicated that they had a good experience overall. Cafeteria Company in particular felt that it brought a lot of customers in that wouldn't have otherwise recognized them. They felt that their, their signage was a little weak early on, and it, it got a lot of people to recognize their location and increase their business over the summer. All of the, all of the business users wanted to have them installed before graduation, before the festivals, so that they could really utilize that increased traffic in downtown during those events. They received lots of positive feedback, similar to the comments that were posed in the survey. And one business user indicated that they had received feedback from a neighbor that Urbana needed more parking overall, and another indicated that they, again, they felt too close to the roadway without more of a barrier. All three businesses are interested in their curbana, and we have many other businesses in downtown that have expressed an interest if the program is expanded to also receive a curbana in the future. Cafeteria Company in particular stated that they would not be averse to sharing space with other businesses. They'd like to host artists, musical events, if it, if it works with their, with their neighbors, but that's, that's for the business to coordinate. They can, they can work with their neighbors to, to have them utilize the space in tandem. And all were essentially speaking to the same point, that the more people sitting outside in downtown, the better, the better for their business and the better for the business district. One business did indicate that the white tiling was a little hard to keep clean, but that was a decision based on what was available. So they would like to be apprised of any future opportunities to change the material if the program is expanded, or if we're able to purchase more tiles in the future, or any design decisions that may come about as the, in the continuation of the program. So a large proportion, 90% in most cases, had positive responses to the pilot program. Staff learned a lot from the business units, users about worked well and what did not work well. Respondents would like to see more shared uses of curbanas. Public art and music were an oft-repeated comment in various, various ways. And staff would like to continue the curbana program. Public Works has indicated that they would like to reinstall the curbanas the first week of April, weather permitting, and they feel that this time around that they will have an efficiency now that they understand how all the materials go together, how the self-leveling system works, and they think they can get it done a lot faster so we can have a longer season. And we'll, we'll take this year to assess any future changes or see if there's interest in expanding to an additional curbana or two in the future. That's all I have for you. If there's any questions.
Questions or comments, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Myles, thanks. A quick one. You answered one of my questions there, but how are you going to allocate the two that we have for this coming year?
The same users have indicated that they'd like to, they would like to be the, the users again. We have two other users that have indicated that they'd like to be considered in the future, but they're not ready to move at this time, so we'd like to reuse the curbanas in the same locations for this season and assess whether there's any changes to be made or an expansion during the next season.
Whether we need one or two more for the following year. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Further questions or comments, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, is this presentation available online?
I can provide it to the clerk, and I, we intend to put it up on the business section of the website after tonight's meeting.
And then, can you remind me, do we charge for these?
There is a, it's the same as the patio user fee, the, the outdoor seating user fee, $250, and the users are required to add the, add curbanas to their liability insurance.
We don't, we don't charge anything for closing the parking spaces?
We don't charge anything for closing, but there is the added benefit of increased use and, for the business, and getting people to downtown and using the extra space.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments? I guess the other issue might be that are you, are you looking for direction on whether we want you to do it again, at the same scale, bigger scale, or, or whatever? I would guess that you would like that.
Yes, we certainly would, and the other factor is that the, the amount of time it would require to make changes to the locations or to the design of the structure would probably be prohibitive this season, which is why we're making the specific recommendation to continue the pilot program and to reassess it again after we've had a full season of use. And we would need to begin pre-planning soon if we were to consider an expansion of the program. These curbanas, our Public Works crews have done an exceptional job in the design and construction of these. As Myles mentioned, we had the option of purchasing a much more expensive railing system, but the one that was designed in-house is substantially more safe and sturdy, and also designed in such a way to not encourage anyone to place a drink or a glass on top of it, or to try to sit on top of it. So our Public Works operations and facility staff did an excellent job in, in making them more safe, even though, you know, it sounds like we might need to do something to, to improve those perceptions as we move forward. If we were to consider additional curbanas on Main Street, we're going to need to take into consideration that concerns about limited, limited use of parking are likely to increase at that point because we'd be, we'd be adding yet additional curbanas. And if we were to do new spaces, that means another round of, of more intensive design because they really are built for the spaces that they're in right now. So I would expect that an expansion would require a good deal of planning and additional expense beyond just the, the cost of having them reset up and, and taken down this season.
So would anybody like to participate in providing direction to staff? Yes, Mr. Brown?
I guess, I can offer a personal comment because I use the one at Crane Alley quite a bit, and I enjoyed it, and I didn't find the railing any problem. I thought that was good. The bus noise was a problem for me. I think if we had it, if we put it someplace else, maybe someplace where the buses don't zoom by quite as fast would be better. I think Black Dog would, you could probably use it. I always see people outside, and they don't really use that table much, there much, so I don't know why. They're just kind of waiting, but maybe if there was a curbana in the area, they'd sit down and enjoy themselves. But, so yeah, I, I mean, I think the extra parking on Main Street would be good if we reduced one on Main Street and put it someplace else, but I understand the problem with reconfiguring everything, so there's a trade-off.
And Black Dog does have an extension of the sidewalk there that provides them some space, but they haven't utilized it in that way, so putting a curbana there would be difficult just because of the, the lack of, of curbside parking that would accommodate the structure. But it's, it's certainly something to think about in the future.
Other, yes, Mr. Smith?
Well, I personally want to see them try it again for the summer and see how it goes. I think the idea of a full season, you know, April through, through, you know, the fall is, is a good, good use. I know that there were different things tried as the season progressed. I mean, umbrellas appeared, those were really needed at, you know, when the sun's really bright and, and things like that. So I think we really, the stuff we've got is very preliminary, and it really deserves another season to really see if it works.
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I think that it would be nice to see them happening again. I guess that the businesses accommodated them, even if it wasn't one that they had in front of their own store, or I don't know how many businesses really upset, were upset by them, but I think, I think the, taking it a step farther and adding musicians to the mix is problematic. If you were going to have musicians on the, on a curbana on a regular basis, I don't know. I guess we'd have to like talk about a program that would allow that without causing a disruption to the general. I don't, maybe it'd be a great asset, you know, but I think we'd have to have a conversation about that.
Just speaking as one council person, I, I concur in the, in the staff suggestion and, and think that extending the pilot program for one more year is, is precisely the right thing to do. Okay, if there's no other comment, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the previous meeting from February 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
And you opposed? Okay. Now, we have come to public input, and Mr., I believe Brian Vura-Weiss would like to address the committee at this time, or yes, at this time, in support of criminal justice
Thank you for hearing me, council members. When I talked to my wife at the beginning of last week, I expected to come here as an irate taxpayer. The, she's been involved with a number of other people in talking to the county facilities committee and the county board about the direction they were taking to build the new jail. In talking with her, when I found, you know, she said, wow, it's $32 million. And then we got talking further, and she said, you know, there's a, it was explained to me that there's a, a way that's legal in the state of Illinois that the consulting firm that does the original consulting, the $100,000 consulting, and if they would be given the, also the ability to draw up the plans, they also have a consortium to do the construction. Well, once they did the first two parts, then they could get a no-bid contract for the, the jail. And in addition, you know, you think, you know, $32 million is a lot of money, but this is in the future, so we're looking at probably 40 million, not 32 million, and it would take a bond issue to do this. And they want to do this without looking at all the alternatives that was presented to them in the ILPP. They would not have included provisions of alternatives to incarceration for nonviolent offenders and people afflicted with mental health and substance abuse problems. They would not have looked at the best practices that save substantial amount of money for us taxpayers and provide a safer community. They would not have allowed planning that involved municipalities, healthcare providers, and social service agencies. And so the fact that you have this in front of you now, I want to commend you, and I want to, I want to give you my appreciation that you are willing to step forward and say that planning for jail facilities be suspended temporarily until an agreement is reached on a target population, number of inmates, and plan for alternatives to incarceration. That's what you have in front of you, and I encourage you to approve that because I think that's incredibly important. Up until now, there's just been a, a small number of community people that have been at the same meetings, it's the same faces, and they don't have any political clout, but you all do, and I think that's, that's what we're looking for. And if it were me, I would go one step further, and I would say that if they didn't look at all of this, these, these alternatives and incorporate them in a realistic criminal justice system for this county, that you would not support them in a bond effort to build a new jail. Because if that's all they're going to do, they're, they're diminishing the quality of life for all of us here in the form of higher taxes. the quality of life for all of us here in the form of higher taxes and, and sending people to prison who will, who will repeat rather than be helped. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a slip from Benjamin Stone, who is in support of the resolution regarding incarceration alternatives, chooses not to address the committee, but asked me to read a statement, and I am embarrassed, but I will read it, because it says, "Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. I wish you and this resolution luck." Thank you. So. I have two slips who wish to address the committee at the time of the agenda. I have a slip from Beldon Fields who doesn't indicate a choice as to...
Okay. Okay.
Yes, I want to speak in support of both resolutions, the last two. The one regarding the reinstitution of the drug court. I think it's extremely unfortunate that there had been a dispute between the state's attorney and Judge Ford over that, but the people that suffer, of course, the people who need the drug court, they need alternatives to the other criminal courts. So I would hope that you would pass this resolution and that you would get it over to Judge Defonis. I believe that, at least as of now, the only person that has the power to reinstitute the drug court is Judge Defonis. So rather than just let the press report that you have done this, I think some sort of delegation, perhaps, of you all to Judge Defonis would be useful. In regard to the resolution for, against, at this point, adding on to the jail, I think that's extremely important. We have very limited social service agencies that are very short on resources. Community elements, I think it's fair to say, is starved for resources. Other agencies, I mean, I had some experience with how starved the, how difficult it is to get resources for projects that want to help kids, particularly minority kids. And again, I think it's important to realize, we just don't want to help minority kids, we want to help adults as well, with a project that Tanya Parker, another resident of Urbana, and I initiated and got accepted by Education for Employment. Now, this is an office which is not generally known. It's a two-county office that operates in Champaign and Ford County, and their mission is to prepare young people for future occupations and professions. And we approached the then-director of Education for Employment, getting a summer construction program going, where we would give preference to minority young people, juniors in high school, most of them, and young women, and have a summer program, teaching them the skills of the construction trades, and also what would, what sometimes we call building trade morality, that is to show you show up, one, you show up on the job, second, you show up on time, and thirdly, you work cooperatively with other people, which you have to do. Well, we went around and around, and Dennis Roberts helped me out by going to the mayor, Lowell Prossing, and we got a $5,000 grant, which was huge for us, because though you had a public agency, it still was so underfunded that we had to go just everywhere we could scrap, but we went for money and money. And we had to reduce sometimes the number of people we brought on board. It was a struggle, and it still is a struggle, though fortunately, United Way has come in and has been a big help. And now, our young people are building United Way homes, rather than building people's garages or huts outside Central High School. Alex Ramirez, who is the chief construction teacher at Central...
You have one minute, Mr. Fields.
...is usually the main person. So what I, what I, the point of this is that if we're going to be talking about investing $32 million, we really should be investing in more positive programs. The sheriff has admitted there is no real treatment accorded in the jail. All there is is crisis intervention, and we need treatment for people desperately. So I hope that you will pass this, and I hope that some of you will show up at the study session tomorrow night before the county board and read this proposal, this resolution to them, and I, you certainly have my backing, and I'm sure you'll have backing with a lot of people in Urbana that they feel this is a very unwise place to put $32 million. Initially, we thought it was going to be 20 million, and we used that figure, and they said, "Why, how dare you say 20 million?" We were stunned when 32 million came up. Thank you very much. I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. I have, I have another slip which doesn't indicate time, and that's Mr. Kilgore. Would you like to talk now?
Okay, good evening. Thank you very much. It's not always a pleasure to be here, but it's very much a pleasure tonight. I served on the Community Justice Task Force for over a year. Our task was to develop alternatives to incarceration. We had a broad spectrum of people involved in the Community Justice Task Force, and we produced what I thought was quite a, quite a useful and important report with a lot of recommendations for alternatives to incarceration. And I was, I was proud to have taken part in that. And on February 3rd, I felt that all that work had been for naught, because February 3rd was the night that we had the presentation from the consultants, where they gave us two important figures. The first one you've heard before, and that's the $32 million figure. The second one, which I think is equally important, is 11.1. 11.1 is the average number of previous arrests for people admitted to the Champaign County Jail in 2013. So what does that tell us? That tells us that whatever is going on is not working. Jailing these people is not working. We need to be trying something different, and pouring $32 million into a jail is not trying something different. It's putting more money into the same failed solution. So that's why I got a smile on my face on Sunday, and I felt good about what the Community Justice Task Force had done, because I saw the resolution that Mr. Jacobson was bringing forward to the city council. And this was very inspiring. It was very innovative, very bold, and I think there's four important things that it recognizes. First, it recognizes that the idea of opportunity cost, that every dollar put into a jail is a dollar that's not put into a social program or a program to keep people out of, out of jails. So if you put $32 million, which is a huge amount of money in this county, into a jail, it means you've dried up the well of any extra funds to do anything different, and you've bound the county into debt for years and years and years, and tied their hands to do anything different. Secondly, that, that building a jail or dealing with this issue, it's not simply a building question or a facilities question, but it's a community question. It's a big-picture question, and it needs a big lens. It doesn't just need an architectural lens, it doesn't just need a financial lens, but it needs the kind of lens that's reflected in the resolution that's being brought before, that's being brought before the council tonight. The third is that the council's resolution recognizes that the key to doing something different is giving resources to programs, and you've named most of them, which are almost all the same ones that, that were recommended by the Community Justice Task Force. And I will also say that it's almost all the same ones that have been put forward by the people without political clout that one of the previous speakers referred to, of whom I am one. So I think, I think there's a continuity in this, there's a coming together that we need a different, a different kind of solution than, than a $32 million, than a $32 million jail. And, and I think, I think there's one, one program that's missing there, or one approach that's missing there, that I hope you will consider when you discuss this further, and that is the notion of racial justice. We have a situation in our county where consistently, more than 50% of the people in the county jail are African-American, yet only 13% of the county population is African-American. We need, we need what was recommended by the Community Justice Task Force, that is, a racial justice task force to address those racial disparities and to come up with policies that are going to move us more toward equity. And the fourth and final reason that this is important is...
You have one minute, Mr. Kilgore.
Thank you. The, the fourth and final reason this is important is that this is a national precedent setter. I study, I study this thing. I've been looking for other resolutions by other cities that, A, presented a broad critique of the, the very failed policy of mass incarceration, that for any city that was willing to intervene and declare that there's kind of an emergency going on, if the county in which they're situated is considering spending huge amounts of resources on a jail, this is, this is unprecedented. So I hope you will go ahead with this, the same way that, that happened with the Ban the Box initiative, which was also quite cutting-edge. So I hope you will go ahead, pass this, take it to the county board, and let's open the debate to a much broader spectrum and includes people like yourselves that have political clout, along with the people, with some of the people in the room that don't have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have just two other public input slips from Chris Evans and Carol Spindell, who wish to speak at the time of the, of the, of the event, and, and so we'll, we'll call you up then. Oh, would you like to talk now, Carol? Okay, sure. Okay, good.
Good evening. I'm Carol Spindell. I'd like to speak as president of the American Civil Liberties Union of Champaign County. The ACLU is deeply committed to ending over incarceration and to finding more effective, more humane alternatives. We're especially concerned about alternatives for the mentally ill, offenders struggling with addiction, and we're especially concerned about racial disparities in the criminal justice system. So tonight, I am delighted, I want to thank the city council and the mayor for their leadership on this issue. I want to thank council member Jacobson. We are very pleased that the event we organized to screen over criminalized served as one tiny catalyst in this, in this event, and we're proud of Urbana, of our small city, for being out in front on this issue. We hope you vote to pass both resolutions, the one from the mental health court and the one to end mass, over-incarceration, mass incarceration. We know it's not easy. To make these goals a reality is not simple. It's not going to be easy. So we urge you, after you've passed the resolutions, to stick with this challenge, and we look forward to continue working together with you. Thank you very much.
Okay, and, and then, I guess, Chris, you'll speak at the time of the issue, and have I overlooked any, any yellow cards? Ah-ha.
I don't intend to speak. I'm just cheering you on.
Cheering, okay. Thank you very much. Okay. The, the next agenda item is ordinance number 2015-02-018. Ordnance vacating an alley south of Hill Street between Romine Street and Matthews Avenue, and this will be presented by Public Works. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. Last fall, we received a petition from Crisis Nursery to vacate an east-west alley south of Hill Street between Romine and Matthews Street. The reason for the request was the desire for Crisis Nursery to expand their facility and add parking where they currently have their building and, and parking. We, once we received the petition, we had a appraisal done. The value of the alley, which is 4, 5,445 square feet, was appraised at $4,100, and the appraisal fee itself was $550. In the meantime, one of the lots on, in this alley was recently sold and purchased by Crisis Nursery, and that's the 1303 West Hill Street lot, which was formerly owned by Lonny J. McKnight. There is one resident that remains on the site, otherwise the rest of the lots are owned by residents. That property owner at the corner of the alley and Matthews Avenue also signed the petition and has no objection to the vacation of the alley. If the alley is vacated, we would need to retain a easement, utility easement. There are three utilities in this alleyway. If there are any questions, Stephanie Record, the executive director of Crisis Nursery, is in the audience, if there are questions for her. And one comment, I did receive a site plan that I'll click on here, of a footprint of what the area may look like. Where the red dot is, that's where the expansion would go to the east from their current building, and they would fully utilize the alley as an accessway and part of a parking lot for expanded parking in the area. So this is a conceptual plan, as I understand it, for expansion for their property, and, and then the physical footprint of the building would occupy some of that lot that they just purchased. So I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Mr. Smith? I totally...
I have one other item, I'm sorry. I passed out a revised ordinance tonight, and that revised ordinance reflects the recent purchase of Crisis Nursery, of that 1303 West Hill Street, with her name on it. That's the last thing.
Yeah. I, I totally support this, and I'm happy to see that it's being paid for by an anonymous donor, so, and not costing Crisis Nursery. So I'd move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Any further... Yes, Mr. Brown?
I guess, this is all currently zoned residential, right?
Yes.
So when, when they vacate the alley, or when we vacate the alley, how does that affect, like setbacks? If they wanted to put parking where it's not shown on the exhibit, but say just north of the remaining resident, would they have to screen it from the resident?
Typically, the answer is yes, but that's really a seedy question, but, you know, it would need to be screened.
And do they have that by right, or would that require a, a special permit to put parking on residential property?
Keep in mind that they haven't even contacted the city formally about the site plan, so, but I'll let Dr. Tyler answer it.
We actually would need to see the parking plan, because some accessory parking requires a special use permit, so we would need to see, is it accessory and determine, but it's possible that they would need a special use permit, just have to see the layout.
Okay. And if they didn't, then how would we enforce the screening, if they're, or would it just not be required? I'm not clear on what's possible there.
There are screening requirements that come into play, whether you need a special use permit or not, and parking lots require a building permit, and so we review for that compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion. Madam Clerk, do we require a roll call on this? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, passes unanimously. With, yeah, to send to council with a recommendation for approval, as, as Mr. Smith reminds me. The next item on the agenda, ordinance number 2015-02-019, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 908 East Oregon Street, Urbana, Illinois, Community Development Department.
So this is a project that's taken a little bit of time for resolution. There was a dilapidated home at this location on East Oregon Street. The city, back in 2012... The, um, city back in twenty twelve obtained a court order demolition judgment and pleased to lean on the property. Subsequently, we purchased the property for an amount of four thousand dollars. The demolition and other costs amounted to about eight thousand dollars. We've conducted a market analysis for the property. We did have an interested purchaser, and, um, were able to receive a offer for the property from Marin Keith Harris with the intention of building a single-family home at the location. The offer of twelve thousand five hundred is within the range that was, uh, recommended by the real estate analysis, or indicated by the real estate analysis. And so at this time, we've had the obligatory public hearing earlier this evening, and we would like to recommend that the purchase be executed. This would benefit the city by reimbursing us for the cost that were outlaid, positioning the site for construction with a new single-family home, bringing it back onto the tax rolls, and, again, reimbursing the city for the costs that it's undertaken in clearing the site. Any questions?
Mr. Smith.
Bill has a question, I'm, I'm just gonna make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
That, the lien that we placed, the eight thousand dollars, is that, is that still, is there still a lien? Or does that go away when we bought the property? So if we, so would the twelve thousand be all we get, or would there still be a lien on that, too?
The twelve thousand helps to reimburse, reimburse us for the lien. We own the prop, or we own the property now.
Okay, so the twelve thousand's supposed to be the full value of the property?
Twelve thousand five hundred.
With no lien accounted?
Right, exactly. Lien, lien is not-
That just seems low, I mean-
Not purchasing the property and then having to expunge the lien.
There was one that sold a few doors down, like, six or seven years ago, for seventeen thousand, I think, so it just seems a little low, but I see the incentive. And, so would there be a way, say, if they don't build a house within two years, for us to buy it back for twelve thousand dollars? Or is that getting too, getting too picky?
I think our expectation is that they would build, that's certainly the intent. Uh, we had originally, you know, initially thought the value would be higher, but, um, in this analysis and the offer was confirmed by a real estate analysis that it would be just covering our costs.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
I move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
So, second. Any further discussion? Uh, yes, Mr. Roberts.
Well, of course, I've walked past this house fairly often, it's in my ward, not very far from my home. And, um, the house that was there before was in a tremendous state of dilapidation, and it had been actually condemned, um, or had been cited for condemnation, and, but we, there was a, I don't know, it took a couple of years to work through the financial, not the financial, but the legal aspects of handling that case, and all the while, the house, the roof was falling in upon, upon the interior walls, and, uh, the front steps were falling apart and disintegrating. It was really one of those buildings which you just, are just waiting for something better to happen for it. And, so the city has, had made this into a vacant lot now, you know, demolition occurred, and it pleases me that it's going to be occupied by a useful residential home that's going to fit into the community and provide another, um, another neighbor in our neighborhood. So this is the best possible use for this property.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have, oh, what, opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, not unanimous, six to one, I, I would have voted aye, or I did, I voted aye. So, um, the next item on the agenda is, uh, an ordinance amending, uh, ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero two dash zero twenty, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen dash seven, regarding the schedule of fees for the live-scanned fingerprinting. And this comes to us from the Finance Department.
Yep, you have your memo, police department purchased a live-scanned machine, and they would like to get that up and running, and they would like to charge forty dollars per live-scanned fingerprint to do this, and amending the schedule of fees. And, do you have any questions, or everyone get to read the memo?
Uh, Mr. Evans.
What does it mean, we said the live-scanned services would be available to city departments and the general public. How would the general public use a live scan?
Um, well, the general public could come, it's my understanding, after speaking with the police department, people who wanted to get a concealed carry fingerprint, I hear that's required in order to get that, could come here and we, they could use our live-scanned machine, and we would charge them forty dollars for that. Also, if someone just wanted to come, maybe they're doing an adoption or marriage certificate in another state, this is how it was explained to me, they could come and get a fingerprint, we'd print that off for them, the live-scanned print, and then they could send it off to where they were going.
And it also said, this is what the county already charges?
The county currently charges forty dollars.
And where would we do this at?
At the, here at the city building.
Downstairs? Okay, I've never known, known us to do fingerprinting in this building, that's why I was asking.
We do do fingerprinting, we just don't, we just purchased a digital fingerprinting system. We've, since I've been here, and probably for a long time, they'll do, um, we have a couple of different city licenses that require fingerprints for background checks, the liquor and the vehicle for hire. And then they do fingerprints for other things, elimination prints, what I understand, registering sex offenders, they do prints. Those prints don't cost, there, there isn't a charge for those types of- school mentoring background checks, all that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, so I, I guess I, I was gonna want to ask if, um, if the fee was basically to cover the equipment, because would a person who requested to just get a regular fingerprint done? I mean, I don't know if we do ink fingerprinting anymore, is this something that, are we also going to incur a fee? Or is that because it's older technology, it doesn't require a fee?
It's older technology, um, it's my understanding that the live-scanned fingerprinting is the type of fingerprint that the police department will choose to use from this point forward because of its accuracy, um, and I'm sure they'll use ink prints for some things. I'm not familiar with those would be. Yes.
Ms. Marlin.
And I, I did ask, had an email exchange with Ms. Beatty earlier today, and she, you pointed out that the state now requires a live-scanned re, uh, fingerprint for liquor license applicants- That's correct. And vehicle for hire.
Just liquor license.
Just liquor license.
Just liquor.
Video, video gaming as well, so, and I was concerned about the, the cost of this thing, and apparently, people who want a liquor license now have to go to the county, they have to schedule an appointment at the county, and even that can be a problem, so that's some time wasted there. Then they come back to the city building, pay another fee for processing, all of which goes to the state.
The state, yes.
And, um, this would at least allow the businesses to do that all, one stop, here at the city building, rather than running back and forth between two buildings.
Yes, that is correct.
So, it would save some time, they'd still be paying the same amount of money, but they would save some time.
That's correct.
Yes, Mr. Evans.
Just to follow up, so individuals who are arrested would be charged for this as well?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
If seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we move to Resolution number twenty fifteen dash zero two dash zero zero eight R, Resolution in Support of Establishing Mental Health Court for Champaign County. Now, I guess this would be, uh, introduced by Mayor Pressing if she were here. Mr. Roberts, have, have you?
Yeah, can I, I can, I can take it, I guess.
Okay, great.
Well, partly because I was present when the, when the mayor decided that this might be a useful thing to bring to the council. I met the mayor at the Art Theater when the, uh, the documentaries on over-incarceration were shown recently, um, and we ended up sitting next to each other, and, and we talked about what we saw while we were watching the films, and the mayor said to me that it would make complete sense to support this because it would help to redirect people who have been picked up by the police for various, various reasons of, um, social disturbance, which probably is, you know, being stemmed from their individual cases, perhaps, not taking medicine, not various, whatever, whatever the reason might be, that they come under the eye of the police, and they're, the police pick them up to, uh, to end the disturbance, and then where do they go? Uh, they should not be taken directly to the jail. There should be a way of remediating the situation that doesn't inquire, doesn't require a criminal aspect to it, but actually provides mental health services to them. Um, and certainly, one thing that they are going to be needing is to have an option of having some kind of other process besides going before the criminal court to relieve that as a next step. So, uh, you know, she said that she would be bringing this before the city council, she drafted this proposal. Um, it's clear and forthright, and it's unembellished, it just requires that, we urge the judges and the state's attorney to renew their efforts to resolve differences in the approach in order to create a mental health court in Champaign County and to find community-wide solutions for the safety and appropriate treatment for persons suffering from mental health issues. So I certainly support it, and I would recommend that we pass it. I guess I make the motion that we accept this and forward it to city council.
Second, yeah, okay, second. And there's second, uh, is there any further discussion? Oh, that, uh, well, I think Chris indicated that it was the second resolution that he wished to address. Uh, yes, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I support this, but keep in mind that this is only one, one piece of the puzzle, and we're trying to address various pieces of the puzzle, or the problem. What's missing is, is a facility where, you know, something intermediate, you know, some people go to the emergency room and they go out the back door. People end up at jail that don't belong at jail, we need an intermediate facility for some folks. Uh, this is one component of that, but we missed our chance a few years ago to, to start funding something like that, and I keep hoping it comes back. Uh, maybe it will.
Mr. Brown.
Um, yeah, I, I support this, I think, um, I, I think mainly we need to convene some kind of a group to study what went wrong the first time around and, and see how it should be implemented. There's more than three hundred mental health courts across the country, some of them gotta be doing it right, so we, we should be able to learn from them and, um, and pick out the best practices. I do think that, um, the county's direction for an adult assessment center will take care of some of the problem with the initial, kind of disturbing the peace incidents, if they have someplace they can take them to see what kind of resources they need, what kind of, um, network, support network they have, where they're lacking, and to, to fill in those gaps. So I'm, I guess I'm considering it to be a little bit more, um, as, as potentially in the, uh, the post, the post-conviction or post-plea stages where it would act more like the drug court and keep people from getting an extended sentence, getting people that, um, have actually committed a crime and had to plead guilty to it, to keep them out of the justice system and to get them more community support so that they don't go back. Um, but I can see it working both ways, either before adjudication or after, so I, I think, um, hopefully that they can have a good discussion on that and come up with a good solution and try it again. Thanks.
Further discussion? Okay, uh, and we do have a motion and a second, so, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now the next resolution is one that I have introduced, so, Mr. Smith, would you, uh, chair?
I'll take the chair, sure. Uh, Resolution twenty fifteen two zero zero nine, Resolution Regarding Incarceration and Incarceration Alternatives in Champaign County, Eric Jacobson, Eric.
So, several things converged to motivate me to create this resolution. One obviously was, uh, a few weeks ago, seeing that the county board had been presented with a proposal to spend thirty-two million dollars on jail construction. And what came to my mind, in conjunction with that, the other two things were two people. One of those is someone whom Naomi and I know well, who suffers from bipolar disorder. And, who has had a very, very turbulent life, um, in and out of relationships, unable to hold a job, self-medicated with cocaine during depressive episodes, did a number of things in manic episodes that were not strictly legal, but never actually came into contact with the criminal justice system, was finally persuaded to check herself into fifth-floor presence, was appropriately diagnosed and prescribed. Now, I'm a scientist, I don't really believe in miracles, but if I did, I would have said that what happened to this person was a miracle. Because now she is able to hold a job, she's drug-free, she has, you know, residual effects from the turbulent life that she led, but the biggest thing is, people who suffer from bipolar disorder, if it's not appropriately treated, approximately ten percent of them wind up killing themselves. She had several suicide attempts, she was ambivalent about, well, every day, she said that she actually wanted to die, but wasn't sure she wanted to die because of the effects on her children, but she would periodically overdose on drugs to obliterate her consciousness, which she was sure she wanted to do. So, one of the things that occurred to me is, if she had come into contact with the criminal justice system instead of the mental health system, maybe she wouldn't even be alive today, or if she did, had, things would be much, much worse for her, much, much worse for her children, for everybody who cares about her. The other person who came to my mind is a neuroscientist named Carl Hart, who wrote a book called High Price. I don't know, uh, Hart personally, uh, but he's, teaches at an Ivy League school, at Columbia, and he grew up in an African-American neighborhood in Miami. He is, he is African-American, and he did a lot of illegal stuff. He sold a lot of drugs and did a bunch of other stuff, as did other people in his neighborhood. He goes back to the neighborhood once in a while, and he sees how the other people he knew as youngsters turned out, and mostly not very well. And he ascribes the difference, the fact that he was able to make it, one of the critical things was that he never got caught. He never fell into the criminal justice system. So, when I saw what was being asked, and of course, the other thing is that I'm aware is, is, I think we all are aware from the news, that there's a movement, a very broad-based movement, a movement that extends actually across the political spectrum from left to right, that recognizes that we are incarcerating too many people in, in this country. And I saw that the jail, uh, the new jail would not result in a significant reduction in the number of cells from our present system, the combined, uh, uh, system of the two jails. And I don't doubt that the downtown jail is in bad shape, and that something needs to be done. But I'm terribly afraid, but we, seems to- But I'm terribly afraid, but we, seems to me that we're at a crossroads. It seems to me that when we are at a time when the public is being asked to invest a large amount of money in the criminal justice system, in capital costs for criminal justice system, that this is the time to say, let's take a really hard look at the mental health issues associated with contact with the criminal justice system. Let's take, oh, I have an apology to make. Chris, I didn't call you up before we started, okay. Go ahead. That this is a time when we should take a hard look at the mental health issues, at the substance abuse issues, at what we do with nonviolent offenders, at the consequences of detention on people's lives, and even pre-trial detention. So I, I did as much research as I could quickly on this. So everywhere as in this, in this document is supported by scholarly research, for example, that people who have been in pre-trial detention are far more likely to be, to be repeat offenders, as, as I think Mr. Kilgore talked about, the frequency with which people rotate. Well, it turns out that if you're in pre-trial detention, that is a big factor, and because pre-trial detention, if it's extended, costs people jobs, relationships, places to live, it just really screws up their lives. So the, this resolution actually has attracted some attention, and people have said to me especially, are you really saying that we should hold the jail improvement? Which I agree, something is necessary for the physical plant, that we should hold that hostage to these other issues. And my thought is, that's actually a more, to do that is a more radical position than people generally associate me with, but to me, it's a logical position, because if this is putting this at stake, maybe our very best chance to get the resources that are necessary, so that people who do come in contact with the criminal justice system do get the mental health support they need, do get the support they need in dealing with substance abuse, do get treated in ways that are going to enhance their chances of coming back into society rather than damage those chances. So that's where I'm coming from, that's why I have introduced this, and I'm, and perhaps I should leave the chair in somebody else's hands, because I may.
Yeah, exactly. And so now that we've had the staff report essentially.
Staff, yes, this is a staff report.
We have two, two bits of public input here. First, Stuart Levy, who doesn't wish to speak, but wishes to support reinstatement of the mental health court and to ask county board to make, to address alternatives before incarceration here. He says, "Thank you, Mr. Jacobson, Meg Pressing and Council. I warmly hope these resolutions pass and appreciate that you've raised these issues." So that's not speaking. And to speak, Chris Evans.
I'm here tonight to congratulate the city council for this resolution. It is, not only is it groundbreaking, but it is exactly, much of it is exactly what we've been trying to tell the county board for the last three years. Jail does not solve drug addiction. There is no drug treatment at the jail. Jail does not solve mental illness. There's only pills at the county jail. And jail does not solve homelessness by no means. According to the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, during the 16 years between 1997 and 2012, there were 35,065 felony prosecutions and 26,652 misdemeanor prosecutions in Champaign County. Mayor McCollum and then Chief Police Chief Carter, Don Carter, tried to tell the community that we cannot arrest our way out of the problem, but we did not listen, and instead, we built a satellite jail, and we doubled the number of prosecutions since that time. We average 3,857 criminal prosecutions per year. Now, here's where it gets interesting. Despite in a community that has the flagship university, the best junior college in the nation, two hospitals and all the economic, we have, what, $4 billion of sales transactions every year in this community. There's plenty of wealth in this community. We are the, have the third highest rate of poverty in, in the state. In 1998, Champaign County counted 17,753 persons living at or below the poverty line. After we got done with all our prosecutions, and in this time span, we prosecuted over, we convicted over 21,811 individuals. In 2012, we now count 43,484 persons living in poverty. The criminal justice system is the wrong hammer to hit some of these nails, and it's absolutely wreaking havoc on our economy. We have got to find some other alternatives. Here's some more information. There's a, no, the psychiatrist at Francis Nelson is taking no new patients. There's an eight-month waiting list at Community Elements. There's a year waiting list for a psychiatrist at Carl Hospital. We have no detox center whatsoever in Champaign County. The Prairie Center was totally defunded and no longer can, the police can no longer take someone that's wildly drunk or intoxicated to a facility. We've got to, and the recidivism rate, by the way, is 50%, and the, and it's, it's just not working. We, we have got to look at the issues of poverty in a holistic way, and your leadership, and I mean that in the most, you know, complimentary terms, your leadership has been outstanding in this matter, if, just even voting on this, it just blows my mind, because we've been trying to get something like this, this kind of conversation started for the last three, if not 10, years at Champaign Urbana Citizens for Peace and Justice.
We have one minute, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. So I really want to commend the council on some really forward-thinking and some outstanding legislation, and I hope that you, I hope you do pass this, and I hope you can join us at the county board to talk to the county board members about this, to have a community-wide discussion as to what we're going to do. Thank you.
Any questions for Chris? Chris, Chris, Bill has a question.
Chris, just a quick question on the psychiatric waiting list. Are you talking about just people that are, that have Medicaid? Is that the waiting list, or is it anybody? I mean, if you had money to pay for it, would you have to wait?
Anybody, and, and oh, by the way, I should add, the pavilion does not take Medicaid or Medicare whatsoever. It has to be private insurance at the pavilion. So we, we don't, we don't have really, and I, you know, the other issue is homelessness. I mean, you know, what would, how many, what would $32 million do toward more SROs, the very successful one on Grig Street that is in Urbana? How many of those could we buy, you know, to alleviate some homelessness? I mean, you keep bringing in people, trespass, trespass, trespass. Wouldn't it be better if they had a place to live, you know? But yeah, the.
So the pavilion takes private?
Only private insurance.
Okay.
So, I mean, we, we've got to, we've got to get some services going again.
Thank you.
Chris, and maybe you know, I, I think somebody told me that there are only eight licensed psychiatrists in Champaign County.
I wouldn't be surprised. No, that sounds about right, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else there? Okay. Aaron.
So the resolution itself, of course, I'm very supportive of it, and I'm very grateful to be able to serve on the council when something like this comes up. There are several different things that are taking place, but I think the paradigm shift that's taking place slowly around this, this issue as it relates to mental health, which brings the, the jail and prisons into view, I think it's also something that, that's taking place, also the fact, the case that the issues around felony convictions also is a huge issue, and I'm glad Chris brought that up, and it's why I'm dawning my Citizens With Conviction t-shirt this evening, because this, the impact of the, as you said, Eric, the low-level, the nonviolent offenders, which is a direct result of not just the mental health concerns, but the drug war that we've been talking about and talking about and talking about for years in this community as well. So while there is more empathy in the community for individuals who have mental health issues, and it brings, shines the light on the subject, the reality is that the numbers that undergird this, that push the population up the way that it is, is the nonviolent offenders, the low-level drug offenders. So while we address this issue around mental health, I hope that we would also address the issue around the concept of low-level drug offenders and nonviolent offenders mixed into that bag, because that is also something that is driving up the numbers. And people need help. I understand personally that though, 75% of the people who you find who are arrested for drug offenses, the vast majority of them are selling to supply their own habits, because they are also users as well. And so this is some information that many may not be privy to, but that is the, that is what's happening in so many different cases. So you still have people who need treatment, and they're not getting that in jail, as Mr. Evans alluded to. I would also say that the, the self-medicating that's, that's taking place is something that is extremely important for us to look at, because over 50% of the people who are in our federal prisons are there for marijuana possessions, right? So we, we have to understand the, the impact that this have, this is having on our prison population, our jails as well. So I'm hoping that we can continue to work on these particular issues beyond just the, the mental health aspect of it, although I find that to be extremely important. I think the Drug Court is a wonderful, wonderful program in our community, and I certainly would like to see that the stakeholders are seeing eye to eye on that issue once again, so that we can continue with the Drug Court. Certainly, I would love to see a mental health facility built in our, our community and supply jobs and all that kind of stuff. I know there's funding issues around that, but if there's $32 million floating around somewhere to, to build a jail, then there's money to, to supply a, a mental health center, especially an assessment center. So just, lastly, I would like to say that if we want to continue this discussion beyond the mental health, but to also look at the racial components of this, there's an event Wednesday evening at the Lincoln Hall, Room 1066, that the student organization, a Muslim student organization is putting on at 7:00 PM. I will be there speaking to that organization. Sister Fatima is in the crowd, she, you all can see her afterwards, and, but that, that discussion will, will hinge upon some of the issues and concerns that we're seeing in the African-American community. Friday evening, Brother Marlon Mitchell is putting on a First Followers reentry program event at Bethel AME Church, and this is dealing with people with felony convictions trying to re-enter into the society, into the community, many of them who have just left the county jail. That'll be at 6:30 PM on Friday evening at Bethel AME Church in Champaign. And then on Sunday, the North End Breakfast Club, as well as the N double, in conjunction with the NAACP, is doing a town hall meeting, and they'll have, of course, the mayoral candidates will be there as well, but the town hall meeting will also be discussing some of these particular issues, mental health issues, the drug war, various different concerns that we have in the community. So I wanted to put that out to the public and to the council members as well, to stop by and to hear some of the other concerns undergirding and surrounding the issues of mental health. But I'm certainly in support of this resolution, and I thank you, my colleague, Mr. Jacobson, for bringing this to us.
I recognize you, Dennis. Do we have a motion on the floor of any kind? No, okay. Dennis?
Yeah. So I totally appreciate Eric's leadership in, in sending, putting together the proposed resolution. You've heard a lot of comments about, you know, why the time has come to perhaps take the advantage of looking at this today. So many of our social services began to unwind back in, really rather a long time ago, back in 19, in the 1980s, when a lot of mental, mental health services were closed and people were released from hospitals and into the community, where now the community was required to start servicing and providing services for people who originally had been helped by federal programs in a different kind of way. While we're still seeing the, the results of the need for support in so many different areas, and I know that I've taken, I've tried to get somebody in at Community Elements, and I was amazed to hear that it was so hard to get in, a client to be have, have treatment who needed it really pretty much immediately. Luckily, they were very flexible and they were able to accommodate that instance, but I, you know, saw firsthand that, you know, the level of help is far exceed, the level of need exceeds the level of help. Because we've had a conversation earlier today about, that was really brought to us by the community coalition and the individuals who talked about working for three, for six years on ways of integrating and communicating successfully between all the different levels of community agencies and, and providers to come to common ground and to build a consciousness of support to lead, lead in a positive way, the community into new and useful programs to assist, to assist not only students, but, you know, the adult community and those of need. When I read Eric's resolution, I thought that there could be some maybe modification or slightly rewording of some of the aspects of the resolution, and so I did provide to the individuals on city council individually suggestions, and they all have copy of that before them. And really, for the most part, it, it doesn't have any, it doesn't redirect any of the energy of this proposal, but I think that if we're going to work with all the players in the decision-making process, we have to understand that our suggestions, our interest in helping has to be done in a way that doesn't negate their needs or their perceptions at this point either. Not to say that, that we can't work together to achieve a coalition of, of support in the most effective way, but one of the things that did bother me was in the last statement under the therefore resolved aspect of it, I don't really agree that, that we're going to gain ground by demanding or requesting a suspension of any kind of planning or use of, consideration of what the facility might be until we get a target population and a number of inmates. I think that, that it's too soon to know exactly what's possible, and my vision personally is that in a, as we abandon the old jail, which is, I think, pretty much agreed that it's no longer useful, then we are probably going to, going to expand or build the facility that we have, but our option, our opportunity is that, that we include space and facilities in that building to accommodate the very needs we're talking about. And why not then make that building not only a place for some incarceration, but also the place for service in the community and put those? also the place for service in the community and put those, put some of that money that might be, uh, raised in the, um, the bond issue to build, you know, the facility of our dreams, to put the services, to put the personnel in, and to have them right there where they're needed, as this discussion seems to be heading to, to expressing. So I'd like to temper the wording a little bit and I've given examples to the city council members and I'm really open, uh, I'm just offering these as thoughts and I'd like to have some discussion.
Eric.
Well, just to get something on the floor that we can discuss specifically, I will, uh, I will move the resolution.
And I'll second it then.
Okay.
And you're moving the original resolution?
I am moving the original resolution.
Okay. Okay, so it's been moved by Eric and seconded by Dennis.
And for the purpose of discussion, I'll be happy to second that.
Okay.
And so I'd like to make a couple of, um, suggestions for changes and, um, I don't know if I should be reading them, you know, piece by piece, or do you want to just comment on them as they affect you or they, you feel like are necessary?
So, yeah. Can I make a procedural, uh, suggestion? I would suggest that you offer them as amendments, one by one, and I will either accept them as friendly amendments or say, "No, uh, we ought to duke it out, let the city council decide."
Okay. Why don't we, one, does that, so Dennis, start with the first one. Let's try to go quickly here.
All right, sure. Okay, let's do that then. All right, so the first, the first, um, first clause, whereas, uh, and I'm adding, "Statistics show that." And, and I'm taking out, then it says, "In the United States incarcerates, A," I crossed out the word "far," but I left the word "larger," and I subtracted a fraction and I said "percent," percentage of its residents than any other nation in the world, with a significant fraction of those incarcerated being detained prior to trial.
Okay. I, I will accept everything as friendly, except the elimination of the word "far." And the reason I won't accept that is we are a three-to-one ratio over the second, over the country that detains the second, uh, largest fraction of their population, uh, is incarcerated. So I think, I think that, I think that it isn't even close, so I think "far larger" should stay in.
Okay, well then, let's have a conversation about that among the members of the city council.
How do others feel about including or not including the word "far"? I see two people, three people like it, four people like it.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's how we do things, all right.
Okay, so, uh, is that accepted as a friendly amendment, then with the word "far" included?
With the word "far" included, everything else is accepted as friendly amendment.
Okay, so that's, that one's done. Okay, let's go to the second paragraph, second whereas, Dennis.
Okay, so I rev, um, so...
Why don't you just read the version you've put together?
That I put together, okay. And basically, I'm taking out a sentence here, or quite, quite a large clause. So I'm saying, "And whereas, recent evidence shows that excessive level of incarceration is not contributing to the sa, public safety, but on the contrary, is needlessly damaging many lives."
Uh, I'll accept that as friendly amendment.
Okay, good. Onto the third one.
Okay. "And whereas, pre-trial detention and the current bail system has been shown to be a burden to people of limited means."
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Fourth one?
The second one. The next one is, "And whereas, recent studies indicate that evidence-based risk assessment produces better outcomes for individuals brought into the justice system for a variety of lesser charges."
I'll accept that as friendly amendment.
Okay, good. And the next one is unchanged.
Unchanged, next one, the next one.
And then the sixth one?
"And whereas, the company, the Ch, the Champaign County Board is now considering plans for the construction of future jail facilities in Champaign County."
Accept that as friendly amendment.
Okay.
"Therefore, be it resolved that the Urbana City Council," all right, and I'm saying, "requests this Champaign County Board to work with other entities in Champaign County on planning for a substantial reduction in the number of people incarcerated in the county."
Okay, I, I will accept the rest of it as friendly, but I wish to keep in urges as opposed to requests. And the reason I, I want to do that is requests implies that we're approaching the county board, to me, it implies that we're approaching the county board as a supplicant. And we're not a supplicant, we're, we're...
Unit of government.
Representing, we're another governmental body and, uh, so I think, I think that the word should reflect that we are engaging in a conversation, you know, in a co-equal conversation.
How do you feel on that Dennis?
I thought that urges sounded, um, um, conflictory. That sounded, I, I was just gonna add a word, I guess, but...
Okay.
Confrontational.
See, see, if I was still in my, if I, if I was still at the age that I was in the sixties, I would've said "demands," so urges is a whole lot softer than that.
Yeah, good point, good point.
I asked, uh, what's the pleasure of the council on that?
How do, how do people feel on keeping the word "urges" instead of "requests"? How many in favor of urges?
Okay.
Okay, the word "urges" stays there, request goes out. Okay, so, uh, next one?
Okay, then the next one, I'm saying, "Supports planning that indic, that includes provisions for alternatives to incarceration for nonviolent offenders and people afflicted with mental health and substance abuse problems."
Yeah. Uh, again, I, I had said urges, that such planning, uh, you know, includes provisions for, so I'd like to keep the word "urges" there again, as being, I think, not seeking conflict, but the more muscular language.
And I, and I was just thinking that supports certainly indicates that we have all, that we indeed support this process. Okay. Make that motion.
Bill, Bill, Bill had his head...
I would support supports, uh, I think because it makes us more a part of the process.
We could say strongly support. That's close to urge, but stronger than support.
I would accept strongly supports as a friendly amendment.
Okay, we got strongly supports.
Strongly supports.
Strongly supports. Okay.
Okay, and next one?
Again, I mean, we're talking about strongly supports here. Planning that involves the affected municipalities, law enforcement agencies, state attorneys, office, healthcare providers, and social service agencies. So I'm really just talking about urges again. I wanted to, to use supports planning. That involves the affected municipalities.
Yeah, no, you've, you've also, the other thing that you've done is you've eliminated a sentence, you're suggesting elimination of a sentence that says, "Pledges on behalf..."
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
We haven't gotten there yet.
We're not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
So, yeah, so, so we have this, this line right here.
Strongly supports, yeah.
You want to do strongly supports again?
Oh, yes, I see. Yeah, strongly supports, yes. I'll accept it as friendly amendment with strongly supports.
Is that okay with everybody?
All right. So this is probably the one that's gonna, we have a real good discussion on this one?
Yeah, that where the rubber meets the road.
Okay. Aaron, okay, Aaron.
So, I thought, so you accepted that involves the affected municipalities? I don't understand what that means, that involves the affected municipalities.
All those municipalities that are having this problem, that's how they're affected by it.
Oh, the people that are having the problem, I don't...
Well, the, the municipalities are, well, I didn't use the word municipalities, that's comes from Eric, but I'm saying that, uh, anybody who has, who is being involved, supports planning that involves the affected municipalities, use the municipalities that are going to be, um, having to build and, and decide what the, um, the building's gonna be like.
It's everybody in the county.
Eric, thank, thank you for flagging this, because I had a, I had a, a brain infarct for a moment. Um, no, I don't support the change that involves the affected municipalities. I say supports. I want to urge or that, what I, I don't, I, what I'm saying in there is that the planning should involve us, that we should be part of the planning. As, as, uh, in other words, you've changed the meaning there to saying that we're supporting planning that involves us. Um, I want to say directly that we must be involved in the planning. I mean, I mean, if you're, you're the language that you...
I thought they said the same thing to me.
Well, the, the language that you put in seems to me that it could, it could mean that we support, involve, the way you've put it in, could mean that we're just affected by it. And I don't mean that, 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 you know, we should be taken into account, I mean, we should be part of the planning.
Well, you didn't say involving, uh, which would've been probably, I think, sending it in that direction. You said planning involve municipalities.
Could I? Strongly supports involving the affected municipalities, law enforcement agencies, state attorneys, healthcare providers, and social service agencies.
In, in the planning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Including, how about strong?
Oh, strongly supports including the affected municipalities.
In planning, including them all in planning.
In the planning would be in, in, at, added at the very end of the sentence then.
Yeah.
So, let me see if I have it right. Strongly supports...
Including.
The affected municipalities, law enforcement agencies, state's attorney's office, healthcare providers, and social service agencies in the planning.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Is that, we all agreed there?
It looks good to me, that looks real friendly to me.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay. Okay, so we have that one.
Okay.
And now we're down to the last one.
Yeah, I said, um, okay, "Request that planning for new jail facilities..." Let's see, "Request that, requests that planning for new jail facilities demonstrates full consideration and community involvement for achieving viable plans for alternatives to incarceration."
So, yeah, so this one, this one, I think, we, we have to really discuss. So, uh, the first part of that that I would discuss is you eliminated a sentence that says that the council pledges on behalf of the residents of Urbana to actively participate in such planning. So my intent there was to commit us to follow up and be part of the process, not just to make a, a one-time statement. So, so I, I really wish to include that, you know, continue to include that.
Okay. The first sentence you're talking about, at least, right?
Right. Which begins with...
And Eric, it might be more appropriate to say, uh, "On behalf of the city of Urbana," rather than the residents of Urbana. Pledges on behalf of the city of Urbana, yeah.
Uh, okay, I think the city is the residents, but if city is a more appropriate form of language, that's fine with me.
Right. We, we, we represent the city, we, some of us represent some of the residents.
Well, collectively, we represent all the residents.
That's true, okay.
Then, uh, the...
All right, so what about, uh, my ending the sentence? I, I, I talked about, okay, the next thing that I, that I, I took out was that, that "Planning be suspended temporarily until the agreement is reached on the target population number of inmates." Well, I think that we just don't have enough information yet to make that statement, because we are still, that's an undetermined number, and, um, why stop, work on the process? We should be thinking about this holistically.
Okay, and, and I guess my thought in constructing it as I did is that any, I mean, the plans right now are aimed at a number of inmates. They're named at a, they're aimed at a capacity of three hundred and eight, of maximum capacity. So there is a number already out there and, which is essentially the same capacity as the two jails put together. Plus or minus, I think it's, I think it's something like six or seven short of the present capacity of the two jails, so essentially it's the same. And so it seems to me that, that defa, that by default, if the plans go forward as they are now, that we're actually planning to incarcerate or detain the same number of people as we're doing now and have been for, uh, for a large period of time. Now, what I'm really, my intention, and maybe we can figure out verbiage, uh, my intention, I, I, I said when I introduced this, uh, I was asked, "Did I really intend to hold the whole project hostage until there was adequate provision for nonviolent offenders, uh, mental health, and substance abuse?" And my answer to that is yes, if that's necessary, that should be done. Um, the, and, and I say that in full recognition of the fact that, uh, in spite of the fact that it was built just a short time ago, the downtown jail does presumably need to be decommissioned and, and, and there was definitely, there was definitely a lack of foresight. So I, I realize that there's some physical facilities that need to be done, but...
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean...
But, 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 uh, if we go forward and do that without providing, without making the right kind of programmatic provision, including resources, including resources for the mental health, for appropriate treatment of nonviolent offenders, for substance abuse, if we go ahead with that without providing the resources under these circumstances when this project is at stake, then how will we ever get the resources?
So what is, clearly you don't want to accept the last one, well, and I know you've written some stuff here on, on your own version, um, so, uh, I have that your last sent, your last two sentences start like this, "Pledges on behalf of the city of Urbana to actively participate in such planning." And now, what, what, what do you want to say as that, you've writ, you've written some more stuff here, what do you want to say?
So, I was playing with some verbiage and I'm not sure, this is a work in progress and so I don't know if it's fully formed, but what I was gonna say, if, if, if this would meet your needs and if it would possibly meet mine, is urges that planning for mental health and substance abuse services, and I'm gonna add, "and, um, and treatment of be pursued with the same urgency as the construction, and that resources be provided to support that planning. So, so, so the effect that I want is, I do not want, I want, I want some jail construction plan to be approved, but I want to be sure that parallel with that, because I think we need it, but I want to be sure that parallel with that, we have made a firm commitment with resources to meet the mental health, substance abuse, and appropriate treatment for nonviolent offenders. And, and, and I don't want to go ahead with the construction until we do that.
Dennis? Well, I think, well, I think your wording is, um, more generous to the needs of the community without being quite so offensive perhaps, or hostile to the, to the people who were trying to convince to work with us in partnership to have a new goal. So, do you want to read it again?
Yeah, okay, what, let me add one. I, I did like the last half of Dennis's statement that says, "Demonstrates full consideration and community involvement for achieving viable plans for alternatives to incarceration." I, I don't know if that could've worked in there at all.
Okay.
So why don't you, why don't you read the, a new last sentence?
Okay. The best that I can do at this hour...
And, and maybe you can, you might make some edits for next week, but let's get something done tonight.
That's true, because it has to go to, it has to go to full council for approval. So, so, uh, so I might, I think everything else is set now.
Yeah.
I might still want to tinker with this before next week, because I want it to be strong enough.
Read your last sentence, that's exactly how you want it.
So what I am willing to do, which I think will, is urges that planning for new jail facility, that planning for, urges that planning for, doggone it, you know, I...
You had, you have it, urges?
Yeah, but I, I'm, I'm really, I'm conflicted now, I'm conflicted in public, this is terribly embarrassing, but I've got to, uh, say, "Urges that planning for new jail facilities," or urges that planning for mental health and substance abuse service... for mental health and substance abuse service, and appropriate treatment of nonviolent offenders, be pursued with the same urgency and the same provision of resources as jail construction.
Okay.
I, I could support that.
Okay, and I think that says what I want to say, but I'll just say, as an individual, if it's not done, if we don't move forward with these other issues with provision of resources, I will personally oppose the construction until we do.
Well, I think it's very important to have that goal.
Okay. So, yeah, we have a motion, we have a bunch of things stated here now, I think we have a clear motion with friendly amendments and the agreements here, what we like. I would urge you to make sure that you have the wording to the clerk.
Yes.
I've got some here, and though, between now and next week, you might want to consider that last little bit of Dennis's comment. Aaron?
I don't know if this is appropriate to ask at this point, but, so maybe I'll wait for about thirty seconds, and then I'll ask in thirty seconds.
Well, I'm gonna, I, I was gonna call for a vote, so.
That's what I want you to do.
Oh, you want, oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, and, and this goes to council. Aaron?
Because we are recommending that this go to council with, with support, that this goes to council with a recommendation of support, and the language has been vetted here in the public, is it, I guess, I don't know, Simon, you know, you could help me out here, is it okay for Eric to read this tomorrow at the county board at six PM at the Brookings Building?
Mr. Simon?
It cannot be read as a resolution approved by the council. What it can be read as a resolution which the committee of the whole, which is not the council, has recommended to the council for approval, and you certainly can state that the members of the committee of the whole have supported the resolution unanimously, but you can't represent it as a resolution of the council itself.
Okay, try and stop me.
Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned.